One, thank you for being here on January the 21st, City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I'd like to call on invocation Ward Two.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Please stand for the pledge.
I will call on a clerk to call the row.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Councilmember Stallins?
Present.
Councilmember Marsh?
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Here.
Councilmember Craig?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Sumner?
Here.
Councilmember Meek?
Here.
Councilmember Bogard?
Present.
Councilmember Velez?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Droub?
Here.
And we have a quorum.
I have a ward to give away this evening, recognition. I call him a friend of mine, we beat on each other around here pretty much, when he comes and goes in and out the door. Mr. Rusty Powell has been one of, one and two family building inspectors for the city employee for CDS for the past 23 years. Rusty is a native of Hopkinsville and served in the United States Navy. Rusty has been married to Sandy for thirty-eight and a half years, has three children, Chris, Casey, and Carly, and three granddaughters. I'm sorry, Sandy, for you. I'm sorry. But if I get Rusty to come up front here just a second. Like I said, I've known Rusty a long time, not just here at the city, but I've seen him from Walmart, from when he's there working the second and third shift, and now over at the dollar store and stuff working. He's been around. He's been a good friend of mine. Loves to hunt, do things like that. But we're honored to say thank you for your hard work and dedication, twenty-three years to the city of Hopkinsville and our native city. Thank you, sir. All right. Now, we'll move into public comments now. If anyone would like to come and speak at the podium, please come speak, give your name and address, please, at the podium for public comments. No public comments tonight. We'll move into the mayor's comments then, and get everything to come up right here. Alrighty, today we signed a proclamation for the Christian County Coalition for Better Lung Health, partnering with the Kansas Kentucky Cancer Program. We had a proclamation done for that and sent off for National Radon Action Month. Radon is a silent but deadly lung cancer-causing problem, and we'd like for everyone to know that you can get your tech, go by the library or go by the extension office and get a testing kit for that, and we can go and get that done. If you think you have radon in the house, you can go by there and see them, and they'll help you take care of that with the library and the extension office on that. And thank you, Ms. Crystal Kirkman, for all her help today with this. Mayor Youth Council, Ms. Sarah Peterson is here tonight, and she's received a, the Cattlemen Heffer Initiative Award given to her from the Cattlemen Association in Christian County 4-H, and we congratulate her for all she's doing with that. And I'm trying to talk her out of a little cow, but she won't give it up for some reason, Dad. I don't understand that. She says she's got to sell something. But thank you so much, Ms. Peterson, for all you do and helping us. We had a great luncheon today with the school board and their, their foundation. Had a good time there today and listening and learning and everything going on there, and we'd like to thank the school board for that. I'd like to thank Representative Petrie. He was here this afternoon. We had a good conversation with him this afternoon, and he informed us about a lot of things, and we gave him what we thought about all the way to zero on the tax part of it, and he said we were working on it gradually, but he's true. But I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Petrie for all he's doing and coming here to speak to us today. We had a good Martin Luther King Day yesterday. I thank HRC for all their hard work and what they had going on. We know it was a little too cold to march from Freedom to the College, but there again, Ms. Rachel went in, put on a good program at the college yesterday, and we all enjoyed that very much so on that. And one thing I will say is, please remember, please stay warm. Don't forget about, we don't want a bunch of power outages and so on. I'm sure Jeff Heard knows exactly what I'm talking about. He's here to speak to us. But, you know, conserve your energy where you can. Please stay warm, be cost efficient, and hope everyone is safe out there in this very bitter cold weather on that. And also, don't forget the Salvation Army warming station is open over there. We are, city is helping fund in that again this year. So if there's anything we can do, please contact Salvation Army, and we'll see what we can do to help you on that. We'll move into item eight, a report from Jeff Heard and HES report.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate opportunity to speak tonight. Most of the time, there's a UK basketball game following this, so I feel I feel a sense of urgency to move faster, so, but I'll still try to, try to be brief, but would do like the opportunity. First thing I'd like to share, especially a lot of new city council members, I really appreciate Mayor Troy Body, all, all the officials here in the city council, our great working relationship that we have between HES Energy Net and the city, and especially all the street departments, the fire department, police departments, that, that makes a huge difference when you know you can make a phone call, and we're all working towards the same common goal to serve our citizens. So I always like to start out with that, so. The first slide, talking about our mission statement, I won't read each line by line, but the key part of this is really to have excellent customer service, you have to have excellent employees, and so you have to have trained professional employees really to accomplish your goals. And I've kind of got some emotional support here tonight. I've got my management team here, and they, they make up, you know, the core of our team here. So I'd like to recognize Cody Knopf Singer, our controller, Leslie Washington, customer service manager, Dustin Love, engineering manager, Mike West, our operations manager, Timothy Griffey, IT director, also have Brian Cook in, in our sales department. So they're a big part of what drives us in, in, in at least our success. So, next slide. Black and white gives you some reference point. We've been established by the city in nineteen forty-two, so for eighty-three years, we've been in the electric business, but then for the last twenty-five, we've also been expanding our internet, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So the telecommunications part is really taken off in the last few years. Next statement. Normally, at this point, I'd ask Anna Gentry to come up and give a financial report, but she was not able to attend tonight, so I had this, had this statement made, and you know, being good stewards of our finances is very important. You know, we're trusted, we're trusted with the facilities of the electric system and the telecommunications system, and a big part of that is knowing where, having transparency and knowing where our finances are going. So not only do we have a TVA audit that we report to them, but of course, we have an independent audit. And in summary, Dugan, Gentry and Associates has issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean audit, opinion of the Hopkinsville Electric System. A couple of the highlights was our assets actually improved by eighteen point three million, our net position. Revenues increased by six million, are all a little under fourteen percent. And then our expenses went up a little over seven and a half percent, and so that keeps driving, just like most businesses, cost of operations continues to go up, and we're really weather-driven. Majority of our, about eighty percent of our customer base is residential, so we're really driven by hot summers or cold winters. And so it's give and take, like right now was with extremely cold weather, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. I know that makes the, the meter spin, but then there's also a huge demand cost that we pay TVA as well. I'd like to mention a little bit about TVA, especially if we've got some new council members that maybe don't know that working relationship, but we have a a unique relationship with Tennessee Valley Authority. They, they were around and they began, I guess, in nineteen thirty-three, and then, of course, we were a few years after that, but we've had a power contract with them since nineteen forty-two. It's varied a little bit, but we have a very unique relationship is that we not only purchase our power from them, but we, they're also our regulator, so it's real unique when you buy a product from someone, and then they tell you how much you can sell it for, and the rules and regulations that goes along with. But the, I picked out that photo. It's kind of representation of where TVA's been and where they're going. In the, in the background, you'll see the old coal-fired plant, so that's in Drakesboro, Kentucky. For many years, it was coal-fired at the Paradise Power Plant. And then in the forefront is actually the new combined-cycle gas units. And so the last of the coal-fired units taken offline, I think, two thousand and eighteen, so they've been on the gas fire, and TVA's kind of been moving in that direction away from coal-fired plants and all, and so there's a, you know, there's always discussions now about, especially when we have extreme cold, about where the, what's the capacity? Have we got enough power, right? And if you go to the next slide, just a little more, a little bit about TVA. TVA, actually, we're one of a hundred and fifty-three distributors of various sizes, but we represent ten million customers across this seven-state area. So this is a very large responsibility that we're all part of. Then the next slide has a reference point. Usually, when you think about TVA, you think about flood control and dams, and that is still a big part of what TVA does, but it's a small portion now of actually their power. So most people are surprised when they see that forty, forty-two percent of the capacity or what, what keeps our lights on is actually nuclear-based now, and that's the direction that TVA is going towards. And so it's a lot cleaner than the fossil fuels right now. Of course, gas and then coal still make up a, a large portion of that, but that is TVA's plan going in the future is to go away from the fossil fuels and go towards nuclear. You'll see, of course, it still represents a smaller portion, the hydro, and then, of course, wind and solar, all those are components and pieces that, that TVA uses, and we have all requirements contracts, so that means a hundred percent of our power is purchased through TVA. Paradise Plant, there's a huge transmission grid that it all ties into, that we have several connection points for redundancy to make sure that if we lose a portion, so that can come from the Barclay Lake, or as I mentioned, the Paradise Plant, but there's several different generation plants that all, that all feed into the grid, and so you know, that's really, really on the forefront right now, and that kind of led to talking about TVA forecast, and I appreciate the mayor mentioning that. That was something I was going to share about TVA's asking to go on conservation. That does not mean to not use your heat or your facilities, just be conscious of that, especially in the morning. TVA is predicting between five and eight o'clock tomorrow morning that they're going to be, they're going to have an all-time peak of thirty-five thousand megawatts, so to give you some understanding on that. That TVA's been existence for ninety-two years, and they're projecting, if that holds true, that that'll be the most power that's ever been transmitted through their power lines. So it's really important, and you know, they have the capacity, they've got the facilities in place, but it's like anything else, it's pushed, you know, they're, they're utilizing all their, their generation assets as we speak, and so even, even just turning off lights that Volontaria is talking about, turning off lights in bedrooms or bathrooms that you're not using, that sounds like a very small contribution, but you do that across ten million people, and it has a, a pretty dramatic effect. So they really promoting that, and so we're participating in that. Of course, we have plans in place. If, if they have generation issues, of course, on our front, we're constantly working on our infrastructure to make sure that our facilities are not only capable on the, on the good sunny days, but also during, and I'm proud to say, these last couple of storms we've come through really well. We did have some outages two Sundays ago when we had that ice, but it was all during that current daytime, so I felt like we really, it really something to brag about with our reliability. And along with reliability, the next slide refers to rates, and so we still rank up there at the, at the, some, some of the still the lowest rates in our region. And that's another part of talking about always looking for ways to be more efficient or reduce our expenses, and that's really challenges right now from either contractor cost or purchasing large power equipment, those things. There's only a limited number of distributors that you can go through, so it's a very challenging, but accommodators, banker staff for all the work they've done to keep us right there. Some of the lowest in the region, and you know, one thing I will point out, some of the higher rates near the bottom were actually they used to be in the TVA family, and now they're outside of it, and went up. So, so I think it's a direct contribution to why their, why their rates are a little bit higher than, than what we have within the valley. The next slide, jumping over another thing that is important to us every day is focusing on safety, and this is something that probably is as proud as any of our, any of our accomplishments, is over twenty-one years without a recordable lost time injury, so you, you still have some nicks and scrapes, but nothing that's cost us any work time, and so that is a direct reflection on our operations and engineering, and even our inside personnel as well, is every day is making a conscious effort because they do work around some very dangerous facilities and heights, and that combination, there's each day that you go out, there's always opportunity, and especially in weather like this, it's, it makes it more, even more treacherous, and so that's something we take great pride in. It doesn't happen by accident. You have to have a focus on that, and I really appreciate all of our personnel for taking that, being conscious of that each and every day. The next slide, this is probably my favorite one tonight. For the last two years, I've said we're almost, we're almost out of the purple streetlight business. Two years ago, we, or probably a little bit longer than that, we had had agreement to, to make a wholesale change out from all of our old sodium and, and mercury vapor streetlights and go to LED. And of course, the provider, anytime a salesman says these are virtually maintenance-free, just ask what virtually means. And so unfortunately, during that time, there was a manufacturing defect that there was a coating on the LED lights, so I did not know this either until we, we delved into it, but that coating they put on there, the natural, the natural color of these LED lights is purple. And so this phosphorus coating that was placed on there gives you the white brilliant light that we expect, so that's the difference just down the corner from us here, from the left to the purple to what it is now. So we had over twenty-six hundred lights, so it affected us dramatically because we had purchased all of our lights during a timeframe when they were having these manufacturing issues. And so over the past two years, so you still might see some purple lights out there because this is a problem that was just not Hopkinsville Electric System, but it was across probably the whole nation. If you Google purple streetlights, you'll see all kinds of locations, and you'll see all kinds of theories on why they're out there. Sometimes the simple answer is the right one, that somebody made a mistake. I would say they're probably no longer employed if you talk about how many millions of lights have been replaced at the manufacturer's cost, but we are proud to say that we've got those. You'll still see some here and there on maybe the Parkway that was under the state's guidance, but there, th- those are all outside of that, so I'm happy that this will be the last year that I'm planning on talking about purple streetlights. Focusing on the internet side or telecom side, we, we are constantly looking to expand within the city, and it's trying to be strategic of where the needs are, where our existing facilities that we can build off of, so very, very pleased that we had over four hundred homes that are gig-ready, that we've gotten in, in areas from Wayne Sherwood all the way over to the Country Club and Justified Drive, so you know, we try to be strategic and look at the locations that we've, like I mentioned, where we've got existing facilities we can build off of and do that. Unfortunately, we have not been able to qualify for funding. These are all monies that we're having to use out of our own, our own budget. A lot of these projects that you see are funded by unserved and underserved areas, and unfortunately, the city did not qualify having other providers in here, so these are all a venture that we're having to go and do as, as our revenues allow us, but that is still our goal, and we've, we've got a plan and a vision to complete the whole city. It's just a little more difficult when there's not financial resources that some other entities have. Looking specifically in what's happened here in twenty, twenty, just the past year in twenty twenty-four, a lot of that going back to being customer-friendly, we, we had quite a bit of renovations going on, especially our customer service lobby. That we have seen a resurgence during the COVID, of course. In, in, in-house visits were, were limited, but we've, we've seen a little bit of resurgence on that, and not only that, but there's still, everything is still trending online, and of course, Ms. Amy's been in the middle of a lot of these discussions and, and trying to be more customer-friendly, so our customer portal, we can, on, 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 on both sides, electric and internet, we can ninety-nine percent of the things can be done online to save you from making a visit in the office, and that's what everyone is looking for. A major, we had, we celebrated a twenty-fifth anniversary, as mentioned, on, on a broad, as a broadband provider. So that began in nineteen ninety-nine. The vision was that our manager at the time, Austin Carroll, was to use our fiber connections to communicate with our substations and, and use that technology to be able
Next slide. I'm sorry about that. This slide, you don't see much but brick and mortar, but it means a lot. That is right behind our, our, our office on eighteen twenty-eighth Ninth Street that we're doing some improvements to have backup, an additional backup, a second generator to, for our network operating center to provide the redundancy and reliability. You know, more and more, years ago, you didn't think as much about the storms and the tornadoes, but now it's a regular occurrence, and it's not just enough to, to have a backup plan, but you've got also, you know, be weather-resistant. So we're making this storm, storm-resistant. Nothing is a perfect, there's no perfect solutions, but we know how critical it is, especially in the last, since COVID, that everyone's moving to work from home, study from home. It's even, it's more important now to be able to access have a fiber, high-speed fiber, and being able to, to do your business from home and schooling as well. And so that's at the forefront of our, of all of the decisions we make. Next slide, please. And talked about investing in infrastructure. If you're over on West Seventh Street, you know it's quite a, quite a bit of construction going on that, that was basically driven by the Highway Department of widening Seventh Street, but it's not only, so there's a diagram there at the bottom left, basically from North Drive all the way over to the intersection of sixty-eight and ninety-one. It's about a one-mile section that we're taking advantage of, not only relocating it, but when you have that, when you know you're going to be doing that, of changing out poles, upgrading lines, and being able to make it a little bit weather-resistant, so anytime we have an opportunity to do that, and then a lot of things that go unseen, if you drive by one of our substations, you don't see any moving parts, but that's kind of the heart and soul of our electric grid. That's where we step down our voltage and, and, and relay it down the distribution lines to our residential customers and our businesses, and so all those are constantly being monitored and maintenance, and those are probably our most valuable assets is our, is our multiple substations, and, and those transformers are millions of dollars worth of pieces of equipment, so it's important to make sure those are all functioning correctly. Next slide, please. And then being a nonprofit and, and a municipality, it's very important to us to not only invest in infrastructure, but to also invest in our community. And that takes on two forms, not only as a company giving, but as an individual employee, so you know, if you're looking at some of these pictures, whether it's a career expo, mend-to-be, Chamber of Commerce, EDC, we're heavily involved in all of these as a company and, and our, and our employees. A lot of these are here tonight, and then among the fifty-five, we have a very dedicated working force that understands what it means to not only be committed to keep the lights on and the internet flowing, but also be good citizens and neighbors, and it's the same people that
and neighbors. And it's the same people that you see at the grocery store and the ball games at church. So they're, they're, you know, it's just as important to get the power back on or the internet flowing because they want to take care of our neighbors. And the next photo, please. Just a few more, uh, Boys and Girls Club Salvation Army. We had stuffed the bucket where we did a clothes drive and then the one, uh, and then of course the Christmas parade. I was just talking to Toby. One of these years, we're going to have one where it doesn't rain or snow or ice or a storm come through there. But regardless, we'll be there to lead it, rain or snow or shine. We'll be, we'll be glad to, uh, be in the front of it. So we really look forward, uh, to it. Of course, the lineman, they're used to being out in that weather. So they didn't pay any attention to it. It was the rest of us that, um, used to be in the office. So I was the only one that was complaining about being wet. Uh, one more, I think we have another photo. And then the one we really hang our hat on is being united, being involved in the United Way. Of course, they serve over 20 agencies and so, but not only do we have a corporate donation, but our employees are, are givers. So out of 55 employees, 37 are Latham givers, which is I think over $500. So they really are invested in the community. And so, uh, we had over a $31,000 donation total. That also includes the contribution by TVA that's trying to be more active in a lot of these local communities. So, you know, each of those, and then of course at the bottom, uh, some pictures of us doing some safety demonstration at some local schools and being in, involved in the, in the youth of our community. Think you have one more photo. And then we also have our yearly scholarships. So we do three and try to, uh, so this year it was, uh, between the local schools, we had three, uh, very outstanding, uh, scholarship recipients from Heritage, Trigg County and Todd County, one from each of the areas that, uh, that our internet and electric serves. And so try to invest in the future because that's part of having a capable workforce is also look into the future and having, uh, young talent stay in our area. You know, that's important to us and, and that's something that we need. The jobs that we have are highly technical in nature and it takes, uh, a commitment to, from our community. And we're really appreciative of the community college and all of our technical programs and our school systems that they're working and training the young people that they can stay here and work in, in, uh, in highly, highly skilled jobs and be part, uh, stay in part of our community. Then I think I have one more, just a picture of our team. And I also like to recognize our board of directors, Reverend Buddy Slaughter, Margaret Crim, retired, retired... Surprise that's a bad sign, right? When it comes on. But, uh, that's, uh, that's my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions or the tough ones I'll pass along to our management team.
Any questions?
Jeff, I, looking at your safety record, that's phenomenal just on the surface, what it is, amount of days. But what percentage of the work that you all do are done on live electric wires? I know it's up there.
That is a good question. Um, you know, e- each and every day. So we have 20 plus or minus folks in the operation that are out there. That'd be, I, I can, I would include our fiber technicians as well because they're right in that zone. So you've got nearly half the workforce that every day is out there. So if you multiply that by 2,000 working hours, so that's, I'd say, you know, that's 50% of our employees, close to 50%. So that's got to be, you know, 40,000 working hours. And of course it's different degrees. Some days it might be on the ground pulling, pulling a, a line, but a lot of that is in a bucket and, uh, putting your hands on 7,200 or 25,000 volt inductor. So that is something. And it goes back to actually that started, um, unfortunately that started from a tragedy. We had actually lost a lineman that, uh, was electrocuted, Mr. Joe Holland. And the one positive thing that came from that was refocus on the safety. And so that actually started, uh, from that incident that he had. So that's one legacy that, uh, that I'm glad that we've continued on from that point in time.
Y'all do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Travis?
I just want to give you a shout out, your fiber team. So I have, I have your fiber internet. And it's very rarely that I have a problem, but when I do, I call in and there's somebody there. It doesn't matter what time of night it is, there's somebody there to walk me through it. And, and even if I do have an issue where they have to come out, they usually come out the same day. So that type of services, you just don't hear of that.
Well, I really appreciate that. I'll take the credit.
Yeah.
Timothy Griffey, our IT director is, is, is a, a big component of that, a big part of that. And, you know, I think that goes back to being hometown and middle local. Although, uh, everyone that you call in and talk to at our office, all of our tech support are local, right? You call in, they're just, just down the street. And so it's a whole lot easier to respond, either physically bringing our crews out when we're right here in town than if you're coming from another region or area. And so that, I think that is the key that they're involved and it goes, but it goes back to the training, the training and, and making sure that there's, uh, you have capable people in the right places. And so we've been...
The people show up to fix it. They're the nicest people. I mean, like...
Well, I thank a lot of them, but I'll pass...
Thank you.
Yeah, just one other thing. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry to say that HES Energy Net is not available in my part of town. So it's, sorry for the limitations that you have. The other thing I was going to say is circling back to what you were talking about just a few moments ago about, uh, peak usage in the morning.
Yes.
Does HES, to add value to the process, does HES have something posted on a Facebook page or something that we might be able to share because, you know, a smaller percentage of people in Hopkinsville will watch this tonight, where we all may be able to touch our neighbors and friends and contacts through Facebook and...
Absolutely. That's a, that's a good question. And just this afternoon, once we got the notification, uh, from TVA, I think around one or two o'clock is when they notified us. So we've put that on our website and we've also put it on Facebook. And so we, we do try to, uh, notify as large as area. And of course it wouldn't affect just us, but it's also all of Pinnaraw Elektrik's customers as well. So it's everyone, everyone in our region. And so that's, that's very important. Any little, uh, all these small contributions add up to be able to, to, and I'd like to say that problem is going to have a quick solution, but unfortunately it's, it's probably not the type of infrastructure that's going to have to be built. It's similar to what's going on. And, and, uh, and the civil side of it with roads and, and bridges are needing to be rebuilt. It's the same way. And on the electric grid and TVA is really no different than the rest of the power systems across the country. In fact, I think they're better positioned because they have, they have a wide variety of assets from nuclear to hydro to still having gas. A lot, a lot of the country, um, especially to the north is still fossil fuels. And, and so as regulations keep making it more difficult to run those, then they're going to have a, a bigger obstacle to overcome. So TVA is a little bit ahead of that game, that nuclear, um, the nuclear direction. And that's where they're, they would like to see the growth as they take the rest of, as they transition from gas and coal. They want to keep moving to nuclear, but that, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of rules and regulations and it takes years, if not a decade to, to replace that. So these are things where we're going to have to be more efficient ourselves, uh, and, and look for ways to incentivize our customers to, to save and conserve. That doesn't mean that you should limit what the necessities that we have. You know, we have that. It's more about during peak conditions such as here. And then, uh, probably also in the summer months, there's, you know, there's a couple of times each year in the, in the coldest of the winter and the hottest of the summer that we hit these times. But as a general rule, TVA has enough capacity. And then they also have, uh, purchased, they have firm contracts outside of it where they have generation tie lines with other, uh, generation transmission companies. Whereas maybe farther south, they're not dealing with the cold as we are. So they can transmit some of it. So there's, there's a big network going on, but that's, that's...
Well, maybe hopefully the regulation problems will be a little easier to navigate in the near future, hopefully. But thank you for making that shareable so that we can share. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Jeff.
Appreciate you.
Thank y'all. Thank you for what you do at HES.
One other thing, I brought some, uh, HES calendars. Usually, if there's anyone who would like a calendar, I'll, I'll pass it out now or give them to them afterwards. If anybody just gives me a, a note, I'll, I'll pass those out. So, all right.
All right. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll just close saying on these calendars, that's another local. This is something that we have a local photography contest. So the, the, the pictures you see are all, uh, from local entries. They're all pictures that's taken in Christian County. And so that's what adds a little flavor to that. Of course, it's our, our, uh, Christmas parade float on the front, but then all those photos. So we have some very gifted photographers in our community. And so I'm always amazed how many, each and every year, we, we always have several, uh, quality entries. So, uh, we'll keep putting that's calendars as long as there's, uh, requests for them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All righty. Under, uh, item B would be the monthly financial statements from Ms. Melissa Platon.
Good evening. All right. So we're going to do the December financial, uh, report. Uh, we'll start out with our interfund transfers. We did not have any interfund transfers for the month of December. So total year-to-date interfund transfers is 32,069, leaving a balance in the interfund of 67,931. We'll move right into our revenue collections. We'll start with payroll. Our payroll tax revenue collections year-to-date is 11,441,989. And we had budgeted for the year 10,561,602. Um, we are showing an increase in payroll tax collections of 12% right now. Our property tax collections for the month of December is, um, 5,358,751. So we're running just a little bit behind where we were last year. That is 92.7% of what we have budgeted for the year. On our insurance premium tax, um, through six months, we have collected 3,693,881 compared to last year's 3,253,482. Uh, we're running an equivalent premium increase for the year of 13.5%. And then our business licenses are running a little bit behind last year's total collections so far is 37.2% of budget, which is 947,525. So our general fund balance, we started the year with 348,328 of prior year encumbrances. We've collected year-to-date so far 29,120,421. And our year-to-date actual expenses is 27,667,135, giving us a positive revenue, more revenue than we have expenses of 1,801,614. We currently had 114,752 at the end of December, giving us positive revenue over expenses of 1,686,862. That includes our transfers to capital. We make quarterly transfers to capital. We've done two of those. So far we've transferred to capital 1,249,563. When we compare that fund balance, um, last year, 2023, to this year, December 2024, um, you can see our revenue over expenses is not as much as it, as it was last year. Last year we had revenue over expenses of 2,325,916. And this year, right now, we're running a million 453,286, um, revenue over expenses. On our municipal road aid fund, we started the year with $37,200. We've collected in the municipal road aid fund 383,753. We've actually spent 70511, giving us more expenses than we have revenue right now of 284,256. We also had encumbrances of 9,728, leaving more expenses than revenue in the amount of 293,984. Um, MRA funds, we spend a lot in the summer and fall, and then the revenue collects up over the winter time. And then we, we, we come back to positive. So I'm not worried about being negative in the MRA fund. Our capital fund, we started the year with 348,328 in encumbrances. Um, we've collected the 1,249,563 that I mentioned earlier. We've spent 708019, giving us positive revenue over expenses in the capital fund of 889,872. We currently have encumbrances of 101,762, giving us positive revenue over expenses of 788,110. So let me say about the capital fund. Um, we order a lot of equipment at the beginning of the year and then as it comes in, we pay it off. So we budgeted to start July 1st, but then we order everything and we just wait for the vehicles and stuff to come in and then we pay it. So that's why we haven't spent a whole lot yet. I'm sure we'll catch up by the end of the year. So we'll look at our departmental expenses. At this point, if everything was spent equally, we should have spent 50% through six months. So the administration department is at 47%. The tax department's at 44%. Information technology's at 54.8% and legislative is at 52%. In our public safety area, the police department's at 50.1%, ECC's at 52.4%, fire department's at 50.6%, EMS is at 55.4% and fire prevention is running at 51% um, through six months. In our public works area, public works admin's at 46.4%, city maintenance is at 47.6%, Fort Campbell contracts is at 28.6%, the service center was at 48.8%, parks and rec is at 50.7%, the sportsplex is at 39.7% and the aquatic centers at 62.4% through six months. Our total general fund is right on budget at 50%, municipal road aids at 73.3% and then the capital fund is at 19.1, expenses spent so far year-to-date. So let's look at our cash fund balance. We started this fiscal year with 17,617,425, um, plus our year-to-date revenue of 29,124,21, less our year-to-date expenses of 27,667,135, gives us our cash balance at December 31st of 19,070,711, minus our encumbrances of 114,752, gives us our available cash at 18,955,959. Um, when we look at our cash balance, that was November 30th, it was 20,983,203. So we take our available cash and we subtract out, we have two reserve accounts, our capital equipment replacement reserve and our building maintenance reserve. That gives us our unassigned cash fund balance at 17,691,49, which is 40.5% of our adjusted operating budget. So when we compare our available cash to this time last year, um, this time last year it was at 36.9 and this time it's 40.5. We've added a new fund for you. In the month of December, we invested money in the KLC investment fund volun- fund, uh, KLC investment fund. Um, required in our investment policy is that I now add this to our monthly financial report. So you'll be getting a, a monthly update in the monthly financial report of how the fund is doing. So we had zero balance November 30th. We took the, um, pension reserve account and that's the one we invested. So we put the 1,201,994 in the KLC investment and we did not have any revenue or expenses for the month. So the fund balance in the KLC investment fund is 1,201,994 at the end of December. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about December's monthly financial report.
Any questions for Ms. Clayton?
I, I might just ask, about, about how long would we expect for there to be some result of the investment income from KLC?
I hope we have some revenue next month to report.
All right. So monthly.
You'll, you'll get the, I'm required in the investment policy, we're required to report monthly. So you'll know next month how we're doing.
Well, we're just going to speak over that. Go make money.
We hope so.
Right.
I hope it makes more money than what we're making on our checking account interest. So that's my hope.
Any other questions for Ms. Clayton?
No.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that. All righty. We'll move into item nine, approval of minutes, uh, January the seventh, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got Amy and Don Marsh. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That does pass. Thank you, ma'am. Sorry about that. We'll move into item ten, ordinance, uh, O-two dash twenty twenty-five, Helsley Farm, second reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, zone three hundred and sixty-six acres of property located at thirty-six forty-five Russellville Road. Whereas Community and Development Services made applicable recommendation at their November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting for City Council to approve the zoning application, R twenty-four dash ten dash one, as filed by the applicant, John Helsley, Helsley Farms, Jango LLC. Whereas the applicant is requesting that a hundred and eleven acres of the property be zoned I-one light industrial district, two hundred and forty-one acres of the property be zoned AT-one agricultural transitional district, and fourteen acres of the property be zoned B-four arterial commercial district. And whereas City Council concurs, said recommendations are in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the zonings. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one pursuant to KRS one hundred point two eleven, Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services Recommendation dated November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, a three hundred and sixty-six acre property located at thirty-six forty-five Russellville Road at the southwest corner of the intersection of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Way and Russellville Road, identified as parcel ID one three nine zero 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 four point zero zero. As further described on exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein is hereby zoned I-one light industrial district, AT-one agricultural transitional district, and B-four, B-four arterial commercial district. Section two, if any, section subsection, sentence clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid. Such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Most so moved. Second.
Question by Travis. Second by Don. All right. Any discussion?
Right. Call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Step down.
Councilmember Stallins. Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard.
Yes.
Councilmember Velez.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Drod.
Yes.
And that does pass on second reading.
All right. Uh, ordinance O-three twenty twenty-five Borrow Development, the LLC annexation out there, new apartments that we have.
An ordinance, an ordinance annexing approximately fourteen point four nine six six acres into the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, Barrow Development LLC. Whereas the city of Hopkinsville has declared desirable to annex certain unincorporated property known as Barrow Development LLC into the city of Hopkinsville limits. And whereas the subject property is adjacent to the city's current boundaries and is urban in character or suitable for development for urban purposes. And whereas Barrow Development LLC gave prior written consent to annexation, copies of which are on file at the Christian County Courthouse. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one pursuant to KRS eighty-one A point four ten and eighty-one A point four twelve, Hopkinsville City Council hereby annexes the following unincorporated area of Christian County into the city limits of Hopkinsville. A portion of land consisting of approximately fourteen point four nine six six acres, more particularly described in exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as if fully set forth. Hopkinsville City Council hereby declares the service delivery plan and city taxes will be in effect on the first day after publication and notice as required in KRS eighty-one A point four seventy and KRS eighty-one A point four seventy-five have been met. Section two, if any, section subsections, sentence clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid. Such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion?
Motion.
Don?
Second.
Second by Travis. All right. Any discussion?
I got a question.
I do too.
Just to clarify, this is the apartment complex out.
Right past.
Past the stadium.
Okay. That was my question too, because quite honestly, I cannot see this. I mean, I know my eyes are going bad.
Here you go. I'll let you borrow these.
It's okay. I just wanted to make sure I knew as.
No, no. This is, this is the apartment, the, that they built out there. They're really nice out there and I like the flats. They, they landed in for what they did on that. Chuck?
What's the purpose of bringing it into the city? Why do they want it in the city?
They got city sewer. City sewer, you have to be annexed on that. No, they're not on septic tanks. They're on city, on city sanitation, on the sewer park.
Now, are we going to pay anything for that, or they just wanting, need to be?
They, the incentive side of it is we got some paperwork coming, but that has not been finished yet. But we have to do the, the annexation before we can even consider.
Part two, which.
Right. But we cannot consider anything until they are annexed. That's the way, way it states. Am I correct on that, Doug?
That's correct.
Right. We cannot do any.
Well, this is a done question, but why not become annexed before, yes, before you build it? It's kind of like we put the cart first and we got the horse.
It's up to the developer.
It's up to the developer on that. And we've had a few bumps in the road on the development side of it, that they've changed hands and things like that when they've done this. So the annexation would have been here a little sooner, but there again, they sold and things different before we got through with all this. Okay?
Any more questions? All right. Call the clerk. Call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard.
Yes.
Councilmember Velez.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Drod.
Yes.
And that passes on first reading.
All righty. Thank you. All righty. We will move into municipal order, O-two dash twenty twenty-five Tax Liability Net Profit Committee.
Whereas Hopkinsville City Council pursuant to ordinance twenty-four twenty-two amended section one ten point.
All right. We'll figure this microphone out here in just a second. Thank you. All righty. I need a motion.
So moved.
Got Chuck and Travis. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Item twelve, executive orders. Executive order seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, Surface and Stormwater Utility Board.
Effective immediately, Kelly Workman shall be reappointed to the Surface and Stormwater Utility Board. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, and we do need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion, second. Amy and Travis. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Uh, executive order eighteen dash twenty twenty-five, Pennyroll Solid Waste Management.
Effective immediately, Thomas Jones shall be reappointed to the Pennyroll Solid Waste Management Authority. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, and we need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion, second. Amy and Travis. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Uh, executive order eighteen dash twenty twenty-five, Pennyroll Solid Waste Management.
Effective immediately, Fay Hendrick shall be reappointed to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, and this one also needs a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Amy, second by Travis. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Executive order nineteen dash twenty twenty-five, Board of Zoning Adjustments.
Effective imme, immediately, Fay Hendrick shall be reappointed to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, and this one also needs a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Amy, second by Travis. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Executive order twenty twenty-five, Future Funding Committee.
Whereas the Future Funding Committee was originally established in twenty nineteen and has made recommendations to City Council with regard to funding and budgetary issues. And whereas the Future Funding Committee expired in June twenty, June twenty twenty-four. And whereas the mayor and City Council may from time to time need to refer specis, specis, a specific issue to the Future Funding Committee for consideration. Now therefore be it ordered that the Future Funding Review Committee is hereby reestablished and tasked with reviewing, evaluating, and making recommendations to City Council for future funding sources to include modifications to current sources of funds, and to also make recommendations to City Council of the best and most beneficial use of special funding allocations received from federal state sources, and to consider and make recommendations with regards to any additional item referred to said committee. Future Funding Committee members shall be as follows. Councilmember Amy Craig, Chair, Councilmember Jason Bell, Councilmember Chuck Crabtree, Councilmember Don Marsh, Councilmember Travis Martin, Councilmember Clayton Sumner, Councilmember Michael Velez. The Future Funding Review Committee shall, will be staffed by the City Administrator and Chief Financial Officer, and shall expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six unless reestablished by subsequent executive order. And this also needs a motion in a second.
Motion?
Make a motion. We accept. Make a motion.
Motion in a second.
Second. There you go. There you go. I was looking for it. Turn up my hearing aid over here.
I got you.
Sorry about that. All right. Got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Just wanted to ask a quick question. So this committee would make recommendations to the City Council. Basically, we would pass on recommendations or review the future funding and send it to committee of the whole?
Yes. Yes. Everything that this committee will look at, will go to committee of the whole and to my office, and then we'll go from there and y'all will tell us how you want us to do the money.
Okay. So we're all council persons. No question about anybody's position or anything like that. There is not a, wouldn't be any conflict of interest with having a person on both, as chairman of both those committees?
No.
Okay.
Good enough. Doug, for clarification, this is a council meeting, correct?
Yes. It will, it will be subject to open, open meetings, open records.
Can I say something on that too? I, I was going to say as well that these meetings are open to the public. And so, I mean, for example, I remember that there were council members that were not on the committee that used to come to the meetings and just kind of sit and observe. So it's, it's, it's open to anybody, whether it's the public or those council members not on the committee.
I, I sat in on a few of them before I became mayor, and then we had the future funding, we had the ARPA money that they helped, they helped spread around and so on.
Right.
You know, and it was really good because we had, uh, other people from the community come in and asking for money and so on, and that helped us spend it and show us where to go. And then one reason I put this committee back together is that Hop Town helps when we do the nonprofits and so on, that Melissa and them will be talking to you about more here in the next couple of months of what, how we're doing the budget and so on. So this will help us get our money together and this way the, this committee can look at it a little closer to what we're going to be doing.
That's good. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Yep.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We got through that right there. Okay. Other, item thirteen. I will say one thing under other, under, I didn't say while ago. We did a survey talking about council meetings at five o'clock. We will be discussing this on Thursday. But you will have a piece in your packet on Thursday, and I would just like to go ahead and bring it up now. Sixty-five percent of the citizens of Hopkinsville like, want us to keep it at six o'clock. Okay? So we will look at other ways, but I will let you know this now under others. So y'all will have that. So it's something we can discuss on Thursday. Sixty-five percent of the people said they would like for us to keep it at six. Okay? So I will look at other ways to save money on that. But other than that, anybody?
And especially about reappointments, um, would it be beneficial for mayor and council to, if you're going to re-nominate somebody to, to put them back there again, you know, if, to put that number there so we'll know that, hey, they've been there one time, this is the second time, or they've been there fifty-seven times, which if that's a question.
Right. Exactly.
So, you know, somebody might say, well, hey, why are they, and there may be a legitimate reason. I'm not saying there's not, but I, I could see that being something that someone might want to know.
Yes, sir. Don't buy a problem with that at all.
Second thing, uh, a lot of you are new on council. We're all council members. There's twelve of us. Uh, you've probably heard about the council of the whole. Okay? Uh, basically, that is where City Council actually conducts the research and discusses items and brings new business. Once it's kind of got into the order that council thinks it needs to be, it's voted on, and then it, it moves on to council usually, or it's dropped. Uh, there are twelve people in this community that get to vote for two positions, and that's out of the twelve people. And no, I'm not campaigning for either one of them because I don't think I'll take it. But with that said, that needs to be your vote, your vote, not somebody in the communities, not the mayors, not anybody else. That's who you want to lead that meeting and who you want to work with the mayor, work with his staff. I know a lot of times I've gotten calls, hey, I'd really like to see so-and-so. I don't care who you want to see. I'm going to pick who I think and will nominate that person, and that's who I'm going to vote for, who I think is best to serve us. So just to throw that out there, twelve of us get a vote. Great, everybody else has got an opinion and you can accept their advice or not, but it's your vote. So I just want to throw that out there. Right?
Any other council comments? All right. Then we'll move back into Ward two. Ms. Brittany, will you adjourn us, please, ma'am?
I would like to leave with two adjourning thoughts today. One is by Queen Elizabeth the second. It is often the small steps, not the giant leaps, that bring about the most lasting change. I think as a council, we can agree on that. And in honor of Martin Luther King Junior, our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. So may none of us stay silent in the coming year.
Amen.
Amen.
And a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. But Amy, all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Your adjourn. Thank you.